Okay, the time is seven o'clock. Good evening, everyone. Let's call this meeting to order. Roll call.
Councilor Brooks.
Here.
Brown, Cox.
Here.
Jubelisco.
Here.
Mohica.
Here.
Newberry.
Evening.
Parker.
Here.
Carson, Miles.
Here.
Seven eyes, two absent.
Thank you. Let's down for the pleasure of the audience. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, in the light of the United States of America, a true republic, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Councilman Cox, would you mind reading the invitation again?
Yes, Madam President. Bow your heads, please. We are thankful for this day that you have given us for its blessings, its opportunities, its challenges. May we appreciate and use each day that comes to us. We pray for strength and guidance for each day as it comes, for each day's duties and for each day's problems. May we be challenged to give our best always, and may we be assured of your presence with us. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Jott, could you please read the open public meeting statement?
Notice this meeting has been sent the official newspapers, and adequate and impromptu tronic notice has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act as required by law.
Thank you. Counsel should have received two sets of minutes, one for September 6th, pre-meeting conference, and one for September 12th. Can I have a motion and a second for both minutes? Thank you.
I make a motion.
I say.
Thank you. We have a presentation.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilor Brooks.
Yes.
Brown, Cox.
Yes.
Jubelisco.
State.
Mohica.
Yes.
Newberry.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carson, Miles.
Yes.
Six eyes, two absent, one abstention.
Thank you. I have one presentation tonight, which is a proclamation for breast cancer awareness. I'd like to invite Samantha Harries up from Relay for Life to accept the proclamation. Whereas in 1985, the first breast cancer awareness month was observed in the United States, and whereas in 2022, it is estimated that among U.S. women and men, there will be 287,850 new cases of invasive breast cancer in women, and 2,710 new cases of invasive breast cancer in men. And whereas this year, it is projected that there will be 43,250 female breast cancer deaths and 530 male breast cancer deaths. And whereas one in eight women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer in her lifetime, and whereas breast cancer is the most commonly diagnosed cancer and the leading cause of cancer death among women, and whereas death rates from breast cancer have been declining, and this change is believed to be the result of earlier detection and improved treatment, and whereas mammography and X-ray of the breast is recognized as the single most effective method of detecting breast changes that may be cancer long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt. And whereas researchers, scientists, numerous nonprofit organizations such as Relay for Life, and breast cancer survivors are dedicated to discovering the cure for breast cancer, and during the month of October, we acknowledge the extraordinary commitments and efforts invested in this cause and support those who are working towards the cure. And whereas we recognize the breast cancer survivors among us, honoring their courage and the more than 3.3 million breast cancer survivors alive today in the United States give us hope of a better future for those affected by breast cancer. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Joanna Miles, on behalf of Mayor Raymond Giacobi, Mayor of the City of Raway, on behalf of the city council, and the citizens of Raway, proclaim October 2022 to Breast Cancer Awareness Month, urging all citizens to learn the facts about breast cancer, invest in a healthy future by exercising regularly, maintaining a healthy diet, unlimited alcohol use, and get breast cancer screenings. We encourage everyone to stand in solidarity on Thursday, October 13th, 2022, by wearing the color pink and pink ribbons to increase awareness. And that's dated October 11th, Mayor Raymond Giacobi. I'd like to give you a moment, Samantha, to speak on behalf of Relay for Life.
Thank you, Samantha. You're very welcome. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I am a cancer, two-time breast cancer survivor, and I'm a 13-year Raway resident. I am grateful to be standing here today and tonight because, as Council President Miles shared, early detection is what saved my life, two times. I want to thank Councilman Jeff Brooks, who got me connected with the amazing people at the Raway Relay for Life Committee that is a part of the American Cancer Society. After losing my mother in January to her fourth primary cancer, and eight days later getting diagnosed with my second breast cancer, to say that I was kind of looking for something to channel that grief and that energy into, I am grateful that Jeff was able to connect me with such an amazing group of people. Here in Raway last year, through the support of the mayor, the city council, many of you I know and have met through other events and through living here for so long, you've come out, you've supported initiatives like this. Councilwoman Miles, thank you so much for helping to raise awareness about this very important topic. Breast Cancer Awareness Month is celebrated in October, recognized, but it's all year round for those who are touched. The American Cancer Society raises money all year round, and I work for a nonprofit, I do grant writing, I make donations, I want to know where my money goes. And before I was able to really commit to this initiative, I wanted to know how much of your dollar goes towards research, how much of your dollar goes towards helping those that may have less access to transportation, or may not have good enough insurance to get timely screenings, which by the way, October 15th, Raway Hospital is providing free screenings for those who qualify. So any way that we can get the word out about these opportunities is important. This year's Raway Relay for Life event is going to be at Raway River Park. Last year was a beautiful day. It was a wonderful celebration of those who are still here, those who have lost somebody or whose life has been touched by this disease, and those who want to share in the hope. We ask you to join us on June 10th. If you'd like to be involved in any other way with volunteering your time, starting a team, or helping us get the word out, please, I will be sitting here. And again, I really can't thank the council and Mayor Giacobi more than I'm very grateful to be standing here tonight and to be a part of the community that shows its support in ways such as this. So thank you very much.
Okay. Yep, okay. I'll go to the secretary. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. I do want to recognize Councilman Jubelisco. I know that you worked very hard with Relay for Life. Councilman Brooks, ask your as well.
I'm just going to give it right here. Please. Yep.
Okay, Mr. J- coming back to the meeting. Mr. Jott, do we have any communications from the mayor, reports of city offices, or bill payment list?
I'll have to stop, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you. Any reports from council committees? Okay, before we move on again, I'd like to welcome everyone to the council chambers. For some of you, you've been here before, I've seen you here. For some of you, you might be the first time here. So I do want to go over a few basic rules of decorum before we go to the hearings of citizens. So just this council meeting, so first to my right, we have Jeff Jott, our city clerk. He will allow five minutes for each member of the public to come up and speak, whether it's regarding a specific resolution or ordinance, or for the communications on any subject portion of the meeting. So we will make it really clear if it's a comment and an ordinance resolution, or if it's any subject that one comes up right now. Also, clearly, clearly state your full name, and spell out your last name as well, and state your address for the record. There's only three more things. Everyone must be respectful and allow the individual that is speaking to finish without interruption. If you've seen the House of Commons in England, you'll know that that doesn't happen. But this is different here. So it is important that you let people have quietness so that they can speak and share their concerns and ideas. Number four, after all comments are made by the public regarding resolutions, ordinances, or general comments, I will close the public comments section, and if necessary, responses will be provided by the council or the administration. Number five, prior to adjourning the meeting, and we also have, as council members, have an opportunity to make our statements, which is three minutes per council person. So it's always good to review rules sometimes. So I'm going to, with that, move on to hearings of citizens on items on the agenda. So, Mr. Jott, we have people sign up?
Sure. Jeff Robinson.
Okay, so if Mr. Robinson, if you could state your name, spell your last name, and state your address.
What gender are you speaking on?
Oh, thank you. Mr. Robinson, if you could also state which gender item you're speaking on. Council, can I please have quiet?
Okay, yes. Good evening, council. My name is Jeff Robinson, 244 Stanton Street in Raway. I'm also the, as most of you know, the chair of the City of Raway's Environmental Commission. And I'm here tonight to briefly speak in support of Resolution AR-203-22 and Ordinance But before I do that, I and members of the Environmental Commission, a few of them who are here tonight, would like to congratulate and wish good luck to new councilman, Mr. Alexander Parker, who Al has, we all know him as Al. He served on, he has served on the Environmental Commission for a number of years, and has been a really great positive contributor to the Environmental Commission. So we wish him well, and I'm sure he's going to be a great contributor to this council. So that, I wanted to do that first. I'm happy to see that the Resolution AR-203-22, a resolution opposing construction of the CPV Keyesby Power Plant in Woodbridge, New Jersey, is on the agenda tonight. And if this is approved, Raway would join a number of other municipalities in opposing this power plant, like Edison, Highland Park, Hoboken, Perthamboy, Franklin Township, and Sayerville. The CPV gas-fired plant, which is going to be powered with fracked gas, I assume from Pennsylvania, is being built in, it would propose to be built in the Keyesby section of Woodbridge Township, our neighboring town, about seven miles from here. And Raway, as noted in the resolution, is already considered what they call an overburdened community under New Jersey's new environmental justice law, and would be negatively impacted by the plant's operation, along with other communities throughout the area and in Middlesex County, central New Jersey. And it should be noted that the CPV plant is already, CPV already operates a gas-powered plant in Keyesby, and this new one would be built right next to the old one, and they would operate together. And in total, the facility would be one of the worst polluters in the state. So I could talk about all the different pollutants that are going to be emitted from this facility if it's approved, but I think you already might be familiar with it, all of that. But suffice it to say, it would have a negative impact on residents of Raway and all the other towns around here. So we on the Environmental Commission, we urge the council to please vote in favor of this resolution opposing this power plant in Keyesby, Woodbridge Township. And also, if it's disseminated, if approved, that this resolution be disseminated to other elected officials in the state, especially Governor Murphy and the DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, who ultimately will be either approving or not approving this plant. So thank you for listening to me on that. And just a few words on Ordinance O-46-22. Raway, that ordinance is an ordinance amending Chapter 411-5 Water Conservation Regulations. As you all know, Raway already has water regulations, but the new ones that will be created with the passing of this ordinance would have these regulations meet all of the requirements of the model ordinance recommended by the New Jersey Sustainable Jersey Program. And as I'm sure all of you know.
One minute, Jeff.
Okay, thank you. As all of you know, Raway is in the process of applying for certification in the Sustainable Jersey Program, a very prestigious program that would offer many benefits to the city if we are certified. So besides improving our water conservation regulations, approval of this ordinance would help Raway achieve certification in the prestigious Sustainable Jersey Program, which we on the Environmental Commission wholeheartedly support.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Pranita Vishlani?
Say your name, spell your last name. Yes, my name is Pranita Vishlani, and the last name is spelled B as in boy, I, J as in Jack, L A N I, and I live at 103 Princeton Avenue. We wanted to express appreciation and thanks to the council, mayor, and staff for the political courage and commitment to the residents of Raway to put the resolution opposing the Keyesby Power Plant on the agenda. We thank you for putting environmental justice for our already overburdened community above political concerns. We thank you for putting the health and viability of our living planet before other matters. We thank those who fought to make sure this was on the agenda today, and those who will vote in favor of it today, hopefully all of you. We are at an irretrievable moment in human history where every decision we make is of immense import and will be remembered for generations to come. Voting for this resolution will keep 2,374,633 tons of greenhouse gases annually out of the atmosphere. These emissions would be in direct opposition to the goals of the New Jersey Clean Energy Act, Executive Order 28100, 274, the 2019 Energy Master Plan, the Global Warming Response Act, and New Jersey's environmental justice law. It will also curb methane from leaching out into the atmosphere. Methane is the primary, I'm sorry, methane is the primary ingredient of so-called natural gas, and leaks at every system stage: extraction, processing, transmission, distribution, end-to-end use, consumption. And is extremely, is an extremely potent greenhouse gas with a global warming potential that is 34 times that of carbon dioxide over a 100-year timeframe, and 86 times that of carbon dioxide over a 20-year timeframe. Methane emissions from power plants like CPV Keyesby may be considerably higher than previously thought, according to a 2017 study that found gas-fired power plants released more than 20 times more methane than the facilities had estimated. By voting for this resolution, you are helping to stop one of the larger, largest emitters of greenhouse gases in the state of New Jersey. I teach future generations, and they are acutely aware of the damage that has been done and continues to be done to their planet. They write grim stories of an ecologically devastated planet barely habitable by humans, bereft of much of its beauty. They bear the weight of decisions past that have led us to this point, saying unprompted that we should be ashamed of what we have done. We must do right by them. Raway City is especially vulnerable to the effects of climate change. The Raway River watershed region has supported the longest continuously urbanized communities in New Jersey. Our highly urbanized watershed suffers from frequent flooding due to extensive development and destruction of riparian wetlands and floodplains. The man-made landscape and its impacts to the watershed have been dramatic. Destruction of wetlands, channelization, and increasing development within the watershed have resulted in the basic hydrology becoming much flashier with lower average base flows and much higher, more frequent flood events. For these reasons, we as a community must care all the more about the rain bombs, the heavy rain events caused by climate change. A warmer atmosphere can hold more moisture, and globally, water vapor increases by 7% for every degree centigrade of warming. It is likely that in a warmer climate, heavy rainfall will increase and be produced by fewer, more intense events. This could lead to even higher risk of floods. We must do all in our power to stop the expanded use of fossil fuels from increasing these risks any further. What will Raway be like if we do not? We are hurdling towards a nightmarish future. We are exceeding even the most aggressive models on climate change due to many feedback loops. What's happened to Florida is only a glimpse into what is to come. So much carbon is already baked into our atmosphere. Do not underestimate the resonance and ripple effects of this decision and others. Every decision made going forward must be made through this lens. Thank you in advance for voting for what is just and right. You give us hope and faith in government and belief in our democracy. We start town council meetings with a prayer, and this public comment itself is a prayer for our common future. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Lisa Ferraro?
I'll lower this a little bit. I'm Lisa Ferraro, F-E-R-R-A-R-O. I live at 97 West Cherry Street. I am also here in support of AR-203-22. And I just wanted to speak a little bit about ozone and ground ozone levels, even though I know, and so many people have already spoken about, you've read and you already know a lot about this, but I just wanted to point out that the American Lung Association has a report that it does every year on air pollution, and it gave a grade of F to six counties in New Jersey. And Middlesex County was one of those counties. In fact, Middlesex County has gotten this grade multiple times, like repeatedly. And New Jersey is not in compliance with the EPA's levels for air pollution as well. So adding on, like adding something that would make this situation worse, adding another power plant seems like, you know, going in the opposite direction. We want to go in the other direction, right? We want to go into the A level, not in like G, which I don't even know if that exists. We're creating G-level problems. So additionally to this, I just wanted to say about the ground-level ozone. So the plant actually makes these compounds that it will produce if it happens, the nitrogen oxides and these volatile organic compounds. So when it has sunlight, it reacts, has a chemical reaction, that becomes ozone. And so what happens is, this is very bad for our health. This is bad for specifically children, for our elderly, this is for people with pre-existing conditions like respiratory illnesses, like, you know, cardiovascular diseases, which, I'm speaking on this because it touches me, because my family, my parents, who are both struggling with these things, they both have strokes. My father, in this past year, had pneumonia. And I just think of all of the elderly people who have these conditions and how it will affect them. It affects all of us, but it specifically affects those people. Think about if you had COPD, and then these levels of ozone were raised. Actually, there's a study that was done that even a little bit of this raise in ozone levels can cause a significant amount of more deaths for people with COPD. Then, let's say they're exposed to that, and they get COVID. Right? I think that we really have to think about all of these things in the new climate that we're in. And we can do something about it. We don't have to go in that direction. We have renewable sources of energy. So I just want to thank so much the council for putting this, and the mayor and the administration for putting this resolution on the agenda, and I really hope that everybody votes yes for this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Charlie Cradville?
Good evening, members of the council. Charles Cradville, I'm the central Jersey organizer at Food and Water Watch. Our New Jersey headquarters is located at 100 Bayern Street in downtown New Brunswick. And I did actually bring a handout for the council, so may I approach? Mr. Jott? I'll be on for myself. So I know that the other speakers have done a really great job of covering all this, so I don't think I'm going to need the full five minutes, but I did want to just say on behalf of our 70,000 members across the state of New Jersey, thank you all for placing AR-203-22 on your agenda. We urge you to adopt this resolution, and once adopted, I trust Mr. Jott will promptly send copies to all of the public officials listed within. This issue is near and dear to me. Ever since I learned about this proposal, I've been fighting it, and it's been many years that I've been working with the community to educate folks about it and build opposition to it. So I'm very grateful to the business administrator and others who've engaged in the dialogue and helped us get to this point. So sincere thank you to all of you. This proposal for another dirty gas power plant in Woodbridge will make climate change even worse, and it will make it harder to breathe for your residents. The last speaker did a great job of talking about ground-level ozone. And ozone is something you probably remember hearing about before. It's a good thing when it's in the ozone layer high above us, but it's a terrible thing when it's here at ground level. Sometimes referred to as smog. It makes it harder to breathe, especially for people who are already suffering from respiratory illness. And so when we have those hot summer days, when it's hard to breathe, that's often what it is that's making it hard to breathe. And if this power plant is approved and built and becomes operational, we will have more of those days, when your cell phone gives you that alert that says, "Today's going to be tough to breathe. You might want to stay inside today." And we will have more of those days, and they will be worse the days that we do have. So we really do need to stop this. I'm grateful that we're here tonight. I did want to address a couple items. I went back and listened to the last meeting, and I did also review the resolution before you. I noticed that it does mention the planning board approval in Woodbridge Township, and I wanted to just let you all know that I was there that night, and the board specifically prohibited the public from discussing the issue of air quality. That was not in their consideration that night. And I know there was, you know, a discussion about where the appropriate place is for Raway to weigh in on this, and I wanted to just establish that, you know, this DEP air permit process is the last best chance to stop the power plant. It is the appropriate place to be discussing air quality and cumulative impacts of pollution on residents. So that's why we're asking you to adopt this tonight, and we're so grateful that you're considering it. And I also wanted to just add that there's been no needs assessment conducted. So anybody who tells you we need this is not speaking about facts. That's speculation, and as others have alluded to tonight, Middlesex County is already home to six fossil fuel power plants as it is. And we do export electricity to other counties in New Jersey and New York. And I haven't done the calculations for Union County, but I also know that you've got a couple of pretty significant fossil fuel power plants in a neighboring municipality here. So there's urgency on this. The climate crisis obviously provides some of that urgency, but also procedurally, it's important for you to act tonight because this six-year air permit process is about to come to a conclusion. And it is basically under review by the DEP, and when they conclude their review, they would publish a draft permit, take public comments for 60 to 90 days, and then a final decision could be made before the end of the year. Notably, I think it may have been alluded to at a prior meeting, there's an environmental justice law now. permit process is the last best chance to stop the power plant. It is the appropriate place to be discussing air quality and cumulative impacts of pollution on residents. So that's why we're asking you to adopt this tonight, and we're so grateful that you're considering it. And I also wanted to just add that there's been no needs assessment conducted. So anybody who tells you we need this is not speaking about facts. That's speculation, and as others have alluded to, tonight, Middlesex County is already home to six fossil fuel power plants as it is. And we do export electricity to other counties in New Jersey and New York. And I haven't done the calculations for Union County, but I also know that you've got a couple of pretty significant fossil fuel power plants in a neighboring municipality here. So there's urgency on this. The climate crisis obviously provides some of that urgency, but also procedurally, it's important for you to act tonight because this six-year air permit process is about to come to a conclusion. And it is basically under review by the DEP, and when they conclude their review, they would publish a draft permit, take public comments for 60 to 90 days, and then a final decision could be made before the end of the year. Notably, I think it may have been alluded to at a prior meeting, there's an environmental justice law now on the books in New Jersey that requires the DEP to have additional public input and also additional consideration for the impacts on overburdened communities like this city. Unfortunately, those rules are not yet finalized and in place, so it's unclear whether that law will impact this, so we need to do everything we can to stop this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Celeste Recaro.
Put down a few feet. Celeste Recano, R-A-C-A-N-O, 113 Cleveland Avenue, Colonial. So hi, I'm your Colonial neighbor, about three blocks away from the St. Gertrude Cemetery. But anyway, but I do have a lot of ties to Raway. My grandparents are from Raway, Henlock Street. My mom actually worked for City Hall, Raway City Hall, the other building, the older building, and she put together the policy book that was used at that time, since many years ago, but I just thought I'd mention that. So I am also a member of Food and Water Watch and climate reality leader. And I'm here to thank you really so much for putting on the agenda, this proposal to end this terrible fracking plant. Another addition in Kiesby. So I won't give the same facts, I'll just say very briefly that there isn't anything natural about natural gas. There isn't. It's methane. 93% of this methane winds up heating up the oceans, and we're in the middle of so many hurricanes, it's ridiculous. I believe the statistics are, happened in the past, maybe these hurricanes will be one in a thousand years. Now it's like, it's just commonplace. So it's terrible. And the only other fact I'll give that is not, you know, just to add to more facts is that in the world, yes, every year, one in 10 people die from fossil fuel-related pollution. So that's that. And I'll just give you a very brief about, here I am from Woodbridge Township, Colonial's Woodbridge Township, good old greenable Woodbridge. Well, it wasn't for Charlie and Food and Water Watch, I wouldn't even have known about all this. I knew that back a few years ago, that we were supposedly, a broken promise, we were promised that there'd be a Woodbridge Riverside Park, that would be this beautiful park to clean up this area. Supposedly CPV was going to be, they were supposedly, when they built this terrible first plant back in 2016, they were going to clean up this area. It was a fut, it was a fut area, it was, you know, formerly used, the defense area, armaments, I believe. It's never happened. I found out what was going on, I went, I looked, went to Woodbridge Township, I looked at their channel, and there was a 2019 YouTube video that showed this, all this beautiful things they're going to do, they're going to have bicycle, pass, anyway, make it short. I did email, I did speak with the mayor, I know who he is, so I was a teacher in Woodbridge Township many, many years. And I was told that, oh, that never could happen because of this, so badly polluted, and, you know, this is not going to be. But yet, now we're going to build another fracking plant? We're literally jumping from, you know, right, from the frying pan, literally into the fire. So I can't even believe this is happening, and I thanked Charlie for putting me, you know, aware of this, and that's why I want to fight it so much. Here I am, right in the township. I work with the kids, and I see this, and I just, it's just unbelievable, really is. So here we are. So again, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you for putting this on, because to be very perfectly honest with you, I'm not getting anywhere in Woodbridge Township. It's basically, it has been kept hush-hush. I've been living in the township since I was five years old, so believe me, you know, and like I said, I was active and did not know any of this. And as I said, I have the letters, my emails to the mayor saying, oh, what happened to that beautiful park we were supposed to have? It's not going to be. In fact, they just want to put another fracking plant where this terrible, you know, radioactive site is. And that's what I was told. I was told that, well, no one, everybody's complaining about having another fracking plant, but they're not complaining about the radioactivity there. Two wrongs don't make a wrong. Thank you so much. Again, thank you for giving me this time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone sign up?
No one else has signed up.
I sign up. She emailed you.
Oh, you can come up and speak, sure.
Just come up, state your name, spell your last name, and state your address. Good for speaking.
Good evening, my name is Lauren Fernandez, last name F-E-R-N-A-N-D-E-Z. I live at 98 Colonial Boulevard in Raway. I have two schoolchildren in the Raway Public School System. They have lived here all their lives, they love Raway, I love Raway. I moved here because I love the scenery, I love the trees. I felt very like, if I moved to Raway, it's, you know, all the trees are going to, for some reason, keep my air clean. Unfortunately, I've also seen the decrease of the trees, that's something that makes me very sad. I am also an emergency department registered nurse. I've practiced being a nurse for over six years. I worked at many city hospitals, Jersey City Medical Center, Christ Hospital, Trinity House Hospital. And I have seen firsthand the effects of asthma in children, elderly, and patients that are immunocompromised. In the United States alone, over 25 million people are affected by the disease. Low socioeconomic status is a crucial determinant of health disparities. Per the census, Kiesby, New Jersey, is 72% of Hispanic population. Therefore, not surprisingly, this is why we would add a second power plant in New Jersey, right? Because there's, what, a lot of Latino people there? Advocating for social justice is a social responsibility of every healthcare professional to improve population health. As a healthcare professional, I'm here advocating for my neighbors, my Latino, my Hispanic people, the communities that are already overburdened by pollution. Imagine this, air pollution from China has been detected to be spreading across the United States since 2014. Since 2014 and from China. So what does it tell you? There's no, you know, the border's here, it's only Kiesby, Kiesby's only six miles away from Raway. Of course, we're going to get that air pollution. The power plant is within 10 miles of 220 public schools. Therefore, all the children within that distance will be directly affected by this pollution. Like we've stated before, the American Lung Association released in 2022 that the air pollution in New Jersey continues to be an F. Natural gas, they call it, clean carbon, carbon credits, that's all wordplay that politicians use. Greenwashing, that's what it is. The current plant emits 148 tons of nitrogen oxides, which directly contribute to the creation of ground-level ozone. The new plant will double that by adding an additional 149 tons of nitrogen oxides. Kiesby's application also shows the proposed facility's potential of annual emissions of 25 tons of sulfuric acid, 50 tons of volatile organic compounds, 40 tons of sulfur dioxide, 110 tons of carbon monoxide, 126 tons of ammonia, 78 tons of total suspended particles, and 123 tons of particle matter, in addition to many other harmful pollutants, including lead. Ozone directly affects our lungs, ozone, I'm sorry, directly affects our lungs, causes children to have asthma attacks, and even kill people who have respiratory diseases. Thank you, councilpeople, for adding this to the agenda, I really appreciate that. For supporting, I hope everybody supports a resolution opposing the construction of the CPV Kiesby Power Plant in Woodbridge. And I appreciate you forwarding this resolution to Governor Phil Murphy and all of the public officials within the resolution. I hope everyone votes yes. My children are here because I'm showing them what democracy is, what it is you have to speak out. You can't just wait for people to do things for you. You have to fight for your rights. That's why I bring my children here, and that's why they're also going to speak right now. Thank you.
Say your name, spell your last name, and state your address.
Good evening, my name is Jose Quinones, Q-U-I-N-O-N-E-S. I live on 98 Colonial Boulevard. I am here to support a resolution to oppose the construction of CPV Kiesby Power Plant in Kiesby. I want a future where I don't have to worry about the air I breathe and the water I drink. Thank you.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and state your address.
Good evening, my name is Alani Quinones, Q-U-I-N-O-N-E-S. I live at 98 Colonial Boulevard, Raway, New Jersey. And I'm here because I want to, I don't want a power plant near me, because I want a non-pollution air so I can live knowing I can breathe. Thank you.
Mr. Jots, do we have any other people for public comment? Come up, state your name, and spell your last name and state your address.
Amy Garcia Phillips, G-A-R-C-I-A-P-H-I-L-L-I-P-S. I know you don't. I am also here speaking about the resolution AR 203-22 and in support of it. And everyone who's come before me has been incredibly eloquent about why we should do it, why we should support it, and I think most likely, you know, all of you probably agree. But I'm here to urge you to not just sign this, say yes to this resolution, right? Because this is just, this is a good step, but it's a first step. Raway, I've lived here for about 17 years, and in that time, Raway's reputation has changed incredibly, right? And we have an opportunity here to be a leader in sustainable construction and sustainable infrastructure. So I urge you to use this as just a stepping stone, right? The first step in really revamping the way Raway looks at development and infrastructure, right? You're familiar with the LEED certification, Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design, right? We can demand from all our developers and all our future infrastructure plans that they are LEED certified. And not only that, and not just like a token of green or sustainable infrastructure. I'm talking revolutionary, right? Let's make buildings that are fully sustainable. Let's require from our developers that, you know, within their pilot program that they are building rain gardens, or adding to the infrastructure or the community, creating green spaces. There are opportunities that we can, that we can push people who want to be a part of Raway to be better, right? We have been a beacon and a leader in many other areas, and this is just one more opportunity for us. Just think about what it would mean for our residents, our community members, not to mention the most vulnerable, the children, the elderly, what that would mean physically, and then what that would mean to show them a better world, right? Our littles are our most important asset, and we want to make sure that they see that the people in our community, the elders, the administration, really care about their lifetime and about their care. So I am urging you to use this as an opportunity to think bigger, right? Do better, think bigger. Let's push the people who want to be a part of the community to really make Raway sustainable. Thank you.
Do you have any other people signed up? If I'd like to end public comment, can I have a mover and a second? Excuse me, apologies. Please come up, state your name, spell your last name, and your address. Thank you.
Andrew Garcia Phillips, G-A-R-C-I-A-P-H-I-L-L-I-P-S, 1470 Campbell Street. I also want to speak in support of resolution AR 20322. Tonight, my son told me, he learned in Beijing, there's so much air pollution that if you live there for a year, it's equivalent to smoking 20 packs of cigarettes. And I told him, that used to be us, it used to be the same here, right where we live, until people started to push back, demand better environmental legislation. And this is a good reminder that we have to keep pushing back, and so thank you to Pranita and Charlie for bringing this to our attention and getting this onto the agenda. I see it's on the agenda, I assume we all intend to support it, and I hope that you will. I do want to point out, though, that the language that was brought to you, which was much stronger than the language that ended up in the resolution that you're going to vote on tonight. In fact, despite the headline on this resolution, the resolution text does not say that you oppose it. It says that you do not support it. It says that you call on the governor to oppose all natural gas plants. But there's a difference between saying strongly that you oppose it and saying that you do not support it. This is the all-lives matter of environmental resolutions. I don't hear anybody who stands in support of this power plant from our community, so I don't know why you couldn't have come up with stronger language that would have better represented what appears to be a consensus opinion. Thank you.
Is there any further comment to my left, to my right? Seeing none, I'm closing the public comment section. Can I have a mover and a second? Please.
I make a motion.
All in favor? Opposed?
Okay, let's go on to ordinances on first reading. Mr. Jots, can you read each ordinance by title, starting with O 3922?
An ordinance amending Section 129-7 of the Code of the City of Raway, hours of sale, authority to close licensed premises.
That'll be myself and all council present. O 4022. Do I need to, do questions? Thank you. Any council comment or questions? Roll call.
Councilor Brooks?
Yes.
Brown, Cox?
Yes.
Chubalisco?
Yes.
Mohica?
Yes.
Newberry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parson, Miles?
Yes.
That's seven i's, two abs.
O 4022.
An ordinance amending Article 1, Organization of City Government, Chapter 5-1B2, Department of Administration establishing the Division of Human Resources for the City of Raway.
That'll be myself and all of city council. Do I have any council comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilor Brooks?
Yes.
Brown, Cox?
Yes.
Chubalisco?
Yes.
Mohica?
Yes.
Newberry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parson, Miles?
Yes.
That's seven i's, two abs.
O 4122.
An ordinance amending Part 2, General Legislation, Chapter 420, establishing of a cannabis transfer tax and user tax in Raway, and amending Chapter 421, zoning to permit Class 5 cannabis licensed retail businesses in the City of Raway.
That'll be myself and all of city council president, excuse me. Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilor Brooks?
Yes.
Brown, Cox?
Yes.
Chubalisco?
Yes.
Mohica?
Yes.
Newberry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parson, Miles?
Yes.
That's seven i's, two abs.
O 4222.
An ordinance creating a new chapter, 422, establishing cannabis licensing and business regulations within the code for all cannabis businesses within the City of Raway.
That'll be myself and all of city council. Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilor Brooks?
Yes.
Brown, Cox?
Yes.
Chubalisco?
Yes.
Mohica?
Yes.
Newberry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parson, Miles?
Yes.
That's seven i's, two abs.
O 4322.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Article 17 of the Code of the City of Raway entitled Department of Police, thereby including subsection 5-71.2 entitled Auxiliary Police.
That'll be myself and Parker. Any council comment or questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilor Brooks?
Yes.
Brown, Cox?
Yes.
Chubalisco?
Yes.
Mohica?
Yes.
Newberry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parson, Miles?
Yes.
That's seven i's, two abs.
O 4422.
An ordinance amending Article 17, Chapter 5 of the Code of the City of Raway, Department of Police, to include the position of police chaplain.
That'll be Parker and Newberry. Any council questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilor Brooks?
Yes.
Brown, Cox?
Yes.
Chubalisco?
Yes.
Mohica?
Yes.
Newberry?
Yes.
Parker? That's seven i's, two abs.
I'm O 4522.
An ordinance amending Chapter 401-26, the Code of the City of Raleigh, Vehicles and Traffic Loading Zones.
That'll be from, from Mohica and Brooks. Any council questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilor Brooks?
Yes.
Brown, Cox? For, uh, Jubalisco? Mohica?
Yes.
Newberry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parson, Miles?
Yes.
Seven i's, two abs.
O 4622.
An ordinance amending Chapter 411-5, Water Conservation Regulations.
That'll be Jubalisco and Brooks. Any council comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilor Brooks?
Yes.
Brown, Cox?
Yes.
Jubalisco? Mohica?
Yes.
Newberry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parson, Miles?
Yes.
Seven i's, two abs. These will cover a public hearing and final adoption on November 9.
Yes, thank you. Moving on to resolutions. Mr. Jost, could you please read each title for each resolution, starting with AR 18922?
A Resolution Authorizing Surviving Domestic Partner of a Totally Disabled Veteran, Teresa Manino.
That'll be myself and Jubalisco. Any council questions? Moving on to AR 1922.
A Resolution Authorizing Refund of Payment of Taxes Due to the Granting of a Senior Deduction for the calendar year 2022, as Eduardo Caseras.
That'll be Cox and Parker. Any council comment or questions? And AR 19122.
A Resolution Authorizing Refund of Overpayment of Taxes for Calendar Year 2022.
That'll be Newberry and Mohica. Council comment or questions? AR 19222.
Resolution Authorizing the Refund of Money Due to the Redemption of Tax Sales Certificates for 2021 Tax League.
That'll be Brooks and Cox. Any council comment? AR 19322.
A Resolution Authorizing a Veteran Exempero, Yvonne Cruz.
That'll be Jubalisco and Newberry. Any council comment? AR 19422.
A Resolution Awarding a Service Contract for Removing and Transporting 5,000 Yards of Leaves from DPW Facility.
That'll be Cox and Newberry. Any council comment or questions? Moving on, AR 19522.
A Resolution Authorizing the Release of Right-Away Maintenance Bond Fee to Gregory Whitman for Permit 07-21-044-792021 for Block 3, 28, Lot 17, 1531 Essex Street.
That'll be Parker and Mohica. Any council comment? AR 19622.
A Resolution Authorizing the Release of Right-Away Maintenance Bond Fee to 14 Realty Group LLC for Permit 02-19-035, dated 2/27/2019, for Block 87, Lot 5, 15 West Emerson Avenue.
That'll be Brooks and Miles. Any council comment? AR 19722.
A Resolution to Adopt Procedures for Administration Inspection of Federal Aid Highway Projects.
That'll be Mohica and Parker. Any council comment? AR 19822.
No, I haven't yet. A Resolution to Adopt a Title VI Non-Discrimination Policy for Federal Aid-Funded Highway Projects.
That'll be, um, that'll be Cox and Newberry. Any council comment? AR 19922.
A Resolution Authorizing Payment to Big Top Contractors, Inc., for Emergency Demolition of 59 East Cherry Street, Cherry Pit Building.
That'll be Cox and Jubalisco. Any council comment or questions? AR 222.
Resolution Authorizing Payment to Burdo Construction for Emergency Library Stair Replacement.
That'll be myself and Newberry. Any council comment? Moving on to AR 20122.
A Resolution Approving a Professional Service Contract to Hire Rural Associates for Professional Planning Services Associated with Redevelopment Investigation for City of Raleigh.
That'll be Brooks and Cox. Any council comment? Moving on, AR 20222.
A Resolution Confirming the Mayor's App deployment of Members to the Raleigh Redevelopment Agency.
That'll be myself and all city council present. Any council comment? AR 20322.
A Resolution Opposing Construction of CPV Keyesby Power Plant, Woodbridge, New Jersey.
That'll be myself and all of city council present. Any council comments or questions? And I, I do have a comment. I would like to thank everyone who came out and spoke on the Keyesby Power Plant. And we, it was helpful coming to the last meeting, some of you had spoken, and it really did speak to council and the mayor as well. And it was important that we did, you know, put this on our agenda to vote on. And we're surround, we are surrounded in Raleigh with oil fields. We, we know that there's pollution. And as residents like you two, we do feel we have concerns as well, too. So I'm, I'm, I'm happy to be able to vote on this with my fellow council colleagues and tonight. I also want to say thank you to, I know they just walked up, the two young children, Ms. and Mr. Quinones. And they, they really spoke on, it's really refreshing to see some young people come and, come and take part in this democratic process. So thank you, and I will thank them again for the contribution. And moving on to...
204, last one.
Thank you, AR 20422.
A Resolution Authorizing a Non-Fair and Open Contract with McNerney and Associates for Professional appraisal Services.
That'll be Cox and Jubalisco. Any council comment? And seeing none. These, these resolutions will be adopted as one motion on Consent Agenda. Would any council member wish to remove a resolution from Consent Agenda?
Council President, I'd like to remove AR 20322 for a second vote.
Okay. So we'll, we'll vote for the consent, and then we'll vote for that separately.
Yep.
Make a motion to...
Do I need a motion?
Motion to adopt consent.
Okay.
I make a...
Go on, go for it.
I make a motion to adopt consent for AR 203-22 for a second vote.
And a second.
And a second.
I'll see.
Thank you, Councilman Mohica. Okay, so let's vote on the Consent Agenda first, with the exception of AR 20322. Can I have a mover and a second for the Consent Agenda?
Just a second.
Oh, we did, I thought we voted to take that off.
No, you don't have to, just so we can pull it off.
Okay, oh, thank you, thank you. We're all learning, we're all learning. Okay, so that's vote on, I thought we voted to take that, that off.
No, you can ask, it's not on the agenda until we place it on, so...
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to vote on AR 20322.
You're going to vote on the Consent Agenda.
That's fine.
We have a mover and second. You to roll.
Oh, thank you, sorry.
All in favor of Consent Agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Jost. Okay, so now we can vote on AR 20322.
Correct.
Okay, so that's the resolution opposing construction of the CPV Keyesby Power Plant in Woodbridge, New Jersey. And can I, all in favor of, or can I have a mover and a second?
We have mover and second already. You can make a call. I'll do a roll.
Myself, all of us, roll.
Councilor Brooks?
Yes.
Brown, Cox?
Yes.
Jubalisco? Mohica?
Yes.
Newberry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parson, Miles?
Yes.
That's seven i's, two abs.
Thank you, and thank you for your assistance. Okay, okay, moving on to ordinances in second reading. We just have one ordinance tonight. Again, this is, this is a time where I invite the public to comment on the ordinances if you do have a comment. Have you received any written correspondence, Mr. Jost?
No.
Okay. So let's start with this first ordinance, O 3822.
An ordinance amending the 2021 Revised Agreement between the Municipalities of the Raleigh Valley Sewerage Authority.
Okay, can I open this to the public? Is there anyone to my left who would like to comment on this? Anyone to my right? Seeing none, I'd like to have a motion to close the public comment on this ordinance, please. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion, Councilor.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll have a roll, roll call.
Now we need a roll, a roll call on the adoption. Councilor Brooks?
Yes.
Brown? Cox?
Yes.
Jubalisco? Mohica?
Yes.
Newberry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parson, Miles?
Yes.
Seven i's, two abs.
Okay, is there any unfinished business or miscellaneous? Okay. And moving on to communications hearings of citizens on any item. And it's five minutes per speaker. Again, I'd like to remind everyone to let people speak, to give them silence when they're speaking. Please do not interrupt. Is there any, any comment from the public on my left on any topic? Not necessarily on the agenda tonight. Again, the usual, the usual...
Andrew Garcia Phillips, G A R C I A P H I L L I P S, 1470 Campbell Street. I just want to speak to, clarify some information from last, from your last meeting, where we were discussing the long-term pilots that we continue to give to developers. As I said at the time, the big downside to these pilots is that they cut the funding from school districts. And it was explained to you then by, by your CFO that this is not the case, that the school gets all the money that they need. They just write down a piece of paper how much money they're going to need, and then it's given to them. And this is a disingenuous distraction from the point that, that is important to be made. It's not that they can't get the money, they can get the money. They just get it all from all the rest of the taxpayers, all the rest of the homeowners. In a case like this, you gave a thirty-year pilot to a new development that's going to be over down the street from Kirkwood, Cleveland. This is going to have three hundred new units. We know from the other buildings that there's about 0.3 students per unit in these kinds of condos. So that means there's a hundred students that are going to come into the school district, and that building will not pay for them, for them to be in the school district. Raleigh spends about thirteen thousand dollars per student in our school district, so this is about 1.3 million dollars a year of new costs the school district gets without getting new income. And so the situation that we have is that there's a new building, a luxury building, brand-new, with people living there, and they will not contribute to the school district. Their neighbors across the street will be asked to pay more. So when you pat yourselves on the back for coming up with twenty-six million dollars of new income into the city, new, new pilot income, what you're, what you're not disclosing is that there's about sixty million dollars in new costs. I don't know if that's something that you're aware of, but that, the, the gap falls to the school district, which is entirely separate budget. The income still comes to you. So when you multiply this by many more pilots, you can see there's a real problem. And so the taxes have to be raised by the school district side. You get to say you're balancing your budget, but the school district is going to have to keep increasing their, their tax rates to make up this gap, and it's going to push people further out of affordability in Raleigh. So this is a real problem that I hope you'll ask more about and do better when we have new developments. It's possible to develop in Raleigh without giving a developer a thirty-year deal. This new building that you approved is not going to pay anything into our school district until after the year 2050. Imagine that. Its neighbors are going to pay more than a million dollars a year to educate their kids for thirty years. None of us will be here when they start actually contributing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other comments on my left? Any other public comments to my right? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public portion, the public portion. Please, can I have a mover and a second?
I make a motion to close for a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. And I'd like to move to the City Business Administrator. I know that you were listening to the comments. So is there anything that you would like to comment on or respond to?
Thank you, Council President. No, I'm, just for clarity, would like to reiterate what the CFO has explained in the past with regard to the revenue that is generated from the pilots specifically, that these monies are not, they are a source of revenue for the city. They help to fund a number of things, including the board's requests. They actually subsidize the property taxes. And to give the impression, this misleading impression, that the people that live in these apartments and their owners don't contribute to the revenue of the city in order to provide services and goods is completely misleading. These monies are used for services and goods as well as funding the board for their needs. And as the CFO has stated before, whatever's been requested, the city has provided, and we're able to maintain these, these budgets by use of taxes, yes, but also for using the pilot money. I'd like to also, and I'll provide this information online so that the public can see it, provide an analysis that shows for the sites that have been developed, and many of you will remember, I'm starting to turn this way back and forth, but many of you will remember the condition of these sites before the development took place. And you can imagine the taxes that were being paid were comparable to the, the conditions of these sites. Specifically, where Gramercy is located on the corner of Monroe Street, especially on East Cherry Street, through Main Street where it meets Monroe Street. That was all cleared or deteriorated property. There were no buildings there. We were not collecting a substantial tax revenue. And we're to provide good services and fund the, the board as well as other organizations in the city. Another site that we can speak to is the, the REVA site, which before had an athletic facility. That was not contributing the same amount of tax revenue or any type of revenue that's comparable as it is right now. So I'd like, at least for the public to consider, for these development sites that are taking place, what was in place at these, at these locations? There, and I'm going to back that a little bit. In addition to the, the funding that these sites provide, and cleaning up some sites that need attention, we know that they were eyesores, they were unsightly, they weren't pleasant, they weren't enticing people to come to our downtown areas and frequent our businesses and our restaurants. So in addition to the pilot revenue, we know that these, these occupancies also contribute to the businesses that are here. So I don't, I don't want to spend so many directions and so much information, but it's not as simple and as clean-cut and misleading as Mr. Garcia Phillips would have people believe. I'm going to, again, reiterate that we'll provide some comparisons so that people will be able to see in numbers the differences that these pilots have generated for the city.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bush.
Council President, if I may.
Yes.
I have to say that Mr. Phillips continuously comes to these meetings and puts forth misleading information to now the council of the public. Just because he says it over and over again has not made it true. Mr. Phillips's motivation is political. He does not care about the children or the people of this community as much as he claims to. This is political more than it's anything else. We are fully transparent with everything we do here. I'm very proud of our city council. I'm very proud of our business administrator and my administration for our transparency. But yet, Mr. Phillips wants to make it seem otherwise. So I would just like to state the record, make the record clear, please, that we are fully transparent. And if anybody has any questions about pilots and what they contribute to the, to the school district and what they don't contribute to the school district, we will gladly provide them. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, ma'am.
And I will repeat that any time anyone has any questions or they want more clarity, this is the city pool. Please, you know, please come, please visit, call, email. And the administration, the council, will do our best to absolutely help you and answer your questions clearly. Is there any? That's that. Let's move on to council comments. And thank you, Mr. Garcia, as well, and Angie Cody. Starting all the way over here, Councilman Mohica.
I don't have much to say, Council President, today, other than thank you for all the citizens that came out tonight to support what they believe in. Just like you all wanted to point out to young citizens here, this is your town for the foreseeable future. You guys certainly have a long road ahead of you. And I just want to say thank you for being interested in your civic duty as a young constituent here in the city of Raway and looking forward to seeing more advocates among young people. With that being said, I have nothing else to say other than happy Halloween to the kids here in Raway and, of course, for everyone to be safe on the road.
Thank you, Councilman Mohica. Councilman Brooks?
Thank you, Council President. You know, I've never heard short of words, so I do want to start by recapping some words from our friend Samantha Harrys, who received an proclamation today